This meeting is not called order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to testify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Ms. Switchy.
Here.
Mr. McIrvin.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thanks, Jason. First item on the agenda are a couple of proclamations.
The first proclamation is the Mayor's Day of Concern for the Hungry. Proclamation, whereas the city of Renton recognizes adequate nutrition as a basic goal for each citizen, and whereas no child should go to school hungry, no baby should be without feedings needed for mental and physical growth, no elderly person's health should be jeopardized by lack of appropriate foods, and whereas food bank, emergency and hot meal programs working with the city of Renton, local faith communities, social service agencies, and hundreds of volunteers strive day in and day out to stem the rising tide of hunger, but still need more help, and whereas when winter approaches and low-income families must stretch their dollars to cover increasing fuel, electricity, and rental costs, leaving even less money for monthly food purchase, an outpouring of community assistance is needed, and whereas the emergency feeding program coordinates an annual food drive which will be held at grocery stores throughout King County on Saturday, September 16th, 2017, to help support the efforts of their program and the area's food banks in fighting hunger, and whereas the city of Renton has been a steadfast supporter of this vital project and has strived to eradicate hunger in the community, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2017, to be Mayor's Day of Concern for the Hungry in the city of Renton and strongly urge all citizens to join the emergency feeding program and the Salvation Army Renton Rotary Food Bank in their efforts to nourish those who are hungry and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 11th day of September 2017. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Prince that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Glenn Turner was by City Hall earlier today, who's the executive director of the emergency feeding program and really appreciates receiving this proclamation. He wasn't able to be here tonight, but we're really gratified for the work that he and his staff do with the emergency feeding program, so. Okay, Jason.
Okay, next proclamation, Women on the Rise Month. Proclamation, whereas women from all backgrounds and ages need to document and highlight their triumphs and accomplishments even though they are marginalized group, and whereas women need to be inspired by female leaders so that a community of diverse women leaders is created, and whereas corporations, schools, and families all benefit from ensuring the roles of women in the workforce, and whereas women and men are actively seeking opportunities to enhance their leadership skills, and whereas the Women on the Rise Gala will be a networking opportunity for women and men alike to make future successful connections while utilizing newly learned leadership skills, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim September 2017 to be Women on the Rise Month in the city of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and witness whereof I have hereto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 11th day of September 2017. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been, excuse me, been moved by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Switchy, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And Kayla Hall is here to receive the proclamation. Please come forward. You both would be welcome. You have to turn around, Jason, so we can get a picture.
How cute.
Kayla, you're welcome to say a couple of words at the podium if you'd like.
Right here. Well, I just want to say thank you so much, Ruth Perez and Ed Prince and Mayor Law and all of City Council. We appreciate you guys. This is our second year doing this, and it's not easy work, but it definitely makes it much more easier to do when you have support of cities like Renton. So we really do appreciate you, and we hope you guys come out.
That's great. Well, thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you, and you enjoy your vacation on Friday.
Okay, moving on to special presentations. We have, we have two presentations tonight. The first one is a multicultural fair update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Council members. I'm Preeti Shridhar with the Executive Department, and it's my pleasure to present to you this year's multicultural festival. You know, we often use the expression, "It takes a village." This time, it's actually taking a whole world. The whole world is coming together at our doorstep, and thrilled to announce that for a second year in a row, we will be hosting the Renton Multicultural Festival. This would have completely not been possible without the amazing work of Kelly Beamer and her staff, and I think she's here somewhere. Yes, Kelly is here from Community Services. They have tended to every little detail, every little tablecloth, every little, you know, part of this festival, and again Carrie Nass, who has been going from one event and one festival to another, but that doesn't stop her from making sure that each one's an amazing success. And for the multicultural festival, we've also had the relentless support of the members of the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, the Festival Core Planning Committee, various subcommittee members, volunteers, staff from each and every department. Also a huge thanks to Ava Van, who has done an amazing job with marketing and communications, and of course our very own Benita Horn, who's been working on this festival in her sleep, not to mention. So this year's festival is going to have everything we had last year and more, and I'm going to show you a very short PowerPoint just to give you a flavor of the festival. So it's a slightly different PowerPoint, but I think it'll get you in the mood of the festival. So that...
That's great.
I do have one more thing to launch and to share with you. That did say it all. World performers, food trucks, lots of different activities. We're actually going to have ten cultural information booths with interactive arts and crafts such as henna and how to tie a turban and calligraphy, animal balloons, you know, it's all going to be there. And I'm going to show you the promo video for the festival, launch it here tonight, but also wanted to let you know that starting tomorrow, there's going to be various radio spots on Star 101.5. You'll get, you'll see ads on various ethnic newspapers. You've probably already seen flyers and posters and rack cards all over the place. And last but not the least, Evening Magazine is going to have a show on the, a feature on the festival. They're going to run this on September 19th, and of course, if you see anything on social media about the festival, please promote, share, get all your friends to like it because we really want to make this the best festival in our entire region. And without saying anything further, I'll launch the promo video. One of the things you'll see in the promo video is the participation of all the members of the task force on this.
Coming this September, the Renton Multicultural Festival. Coming this September, the Renton Multicultural Festival, and it's going to be bigger than ever. Bring your friends and family and immerse in Renton's rich diversity on September 22nd and 23rd. Hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
What's up?
Hola.
Hola.
Bienvenidos.
Salam aleikum.
Privet.
Mabuhai.
Konnichiwa.
Iha.
Umuakadon.
Jiayano.
Hi there. I'm Preeti Shridhar with the city of Renton. Did you know that Renton is one of the most diverse cities in America? And to celebrate this wonderful diversity, we're hosting the Renton Multicultural Festival. Bring your friends and family for this two-day event which is free for all.
Hello, I'm Mayor Dennis Law, and I would like to invite you to join me at Renton's Multicultural Festival.
Please join us.
Join us.
Come and join us.
Join us at the Renton Multicultural Festival.
At the Renton Multicultural Festival.
The Renton Multicultural Festival.
This is going to be a fun event. I hope you can join us.
Any questions?
Any questions from council?
Great.
Thank you, and please join us at the festival, and please share with everybody.
Thanks, Preeti. And, you know, I want to say, this is really exciting for us. This is our second year, and I've got to give Preeti a lot of credit because she was listening to my harangue for about eight years about how can we do a multicultural festival to celebrate the diversity of our community, and she's worked so hard to make this a reality, as well as all the people that she mentioned early. But the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force members have been tremendous. They are so engaged, they're excited about it, and it's not just a matter of having their name as a member of an advisory group. They are totally involved, and it's just a very exciting event. So hopefully people will be able to attend. It's a great event, and, you know, a very good job, Preeti. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next, we're going to have a presentation on RenCon. I'm quite disappointed because the individual who is making the presentation is normally dressed up in all kinds of weird garb, and now he's here, you know, incognito. I don't even know who he is to see him dressed that way. So, Brian Morris.
I'm not a PC guy, I'm a Mac guy. Oh, there he is, way up there, okay. Okay, yes. Evening, Mayor, Council President, Council members. My name is Brian Morris. I'm the executive director for Renton City Comic-Con, and this is also our second year of doing this. We're really super excited. It's coming up, and it's going to be happening this next weekend, the 15th through the 17th of this next weekend. A lot of people may say, "What in the world is going on? What is Renton City Comic-Con? We have no idea what's really going on there." It's a celebration of comic book geeks, technophiles, cosplayers, and nerds of all ages, and you may find yourself in one of those categories there. Maybe you grew up collecting comic books, or you like watching the Marvel movies, or whatever it is. This is the place that you want to be for this weekend. Yes, what am I going to see there? We have over forty vendors. The entire pavilion building is going to be packed with vendors of all different kinds, from comic books and kitsch little things and collectibles and all kinds of fun stuff that people will literally come from all of the Northwest to buy stuff at. We have over twenty artists from all over the Northwest and other parts of the country who are coming in. Some of the top-name artists who are creators from the top comic books, some of the top movies, a lot of other genres are coming to show what they're creating for us to enjoy in our entertainment. We have panels from all over the place that are going to be there. What I'm really excited about is the diversity we have in our panels. Experts are coming in. We have everything from celebrities. You want to bring your kids in to see the Power Rangers? We have Power Rangers coming in. You want to see some of the other celebrities from the movies? We have some people from The Flash and some Marvels. We have even a whole science track that's going to be presented. We have scientists, real rocket scientists, coming in from NASA and from Blue Origin, going to be talking about space exploration. We have a robotics team coming in from the Aeronautics Division talking about robots, and really cool science track like that of what's happening in like artificial intelligence and AR and VR. So you're going to be able to see panels from all over the, all over the United States, and just topics that explore the imagination, which will be really fun. That's some of the panels right there. A guy from NASA is coming back this year, too. We were really excited. Last year, he was telling us about NASA's trip to Mars. This year, he's talking about general space exploration, what NASA's going into, and we're really excited about that. Some of the sponsors that are backing this, Living Computer, Microsoft, Cindy Indian Gaming, Retro Gaming, Holodeck 3D Scanning, VR Sports, the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and even the city of Renton has partnered with us in this, this incredible event that's coming up. As the mayor was alluding to earlier, we also have a really, really healthy cosplay community in the Northwest, one of the best, in fact, in the country. And we're going to have all kinds of people who are going to be dressing up in their favorite superhero characters, or comic book characters, or movie characters from Marvel and DC and all over the place, which is really going to be fun. We have a huge cosplay contest with actual money that we're giving away, and there's going to be, this is happening in downtown Renton. So it's happening in Pavilion and the old J.C. Penney Building and the old Draperie Building, which is now we're calling the Castle. But on the outside of the old J.C. Penney Building, there used to be all those window displays, those are going to be packed full of top-notch movie-quality costumes that people are bringing in to display for the public and for people attending the con as well. We have a special VR party on Friday night. If you want to come down at VR Sports, they're going to have a whole night of playing VR games and laser tag and miniature golf and all kinds of stuff there, which is really, really excited about that big, huge party that we're having. What I'm really excited about for the city of Renton, though, and hopefully you guys can key into this part, in 2013, the movie industry made over $35 billion in revenue worldwide. Anybody want to give a guess at what the gaming industry made in that same year? Any guess? They were $75 billion. RenCon is pulling together both the movie industry and the gaming industry for $100 billion revenue that we can tap into for the city of Renton. PAX is one of the, is the largest convention in the Seattle region, biggest of any convention. They had 60,000 people. Emerald City Comic-Con had 40,000 people. They were the third-largest convention in Seattle, and RenCon, last year we had about 1,500 people. We're expecting to double that to 3,000 people here in Renton. And that's over a weekend. We're putting beds, heads-in-beds, as they call it, and people will be buying food and exploring the downtown region. So economically, this is so exciting to bring a convention like this to Renton, to be able to have this kind of economic engine that is just growing by leaps and bounds right here in our own hometown. So I would invite you guys, I would love to see everyone there. Kids 10 and under are free if you have kids or grandkids you want to bring with you. And Vicky from the Chamber has even given you her special discount, Vicky 2017. You can put that in if you want to go buy tickets ahead of time and get her discount on that. And we would just love to see everybody there. You also, I think all the council members, we put a little pin on your top. That's one of our RenCon pins, and people can get those for free down there. They have to go through a little treasure hunt, and they can get those pins for free, but now you all have your own RenCon pin that you can wear proudly to display for everyone you see and talk to. So, any questions about this incredible event?
Any questions from council members?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I'd just like to make my recommendation that people in our city get down there, and people from outside our city get down there. I've been going to these comic book conventions with my kids since they were very young, and they just took me to another one this weekend, Rose City Comic-Con. So they're in their twenties, and they're still attending and loving these. And while I was there, just at the Rose City one this last weekend, I just, I'm amazed by the quality of the cosplay, the costumes that people bring forward, and I was thinking about the number of times I've taken my kids to Disneyland and waited like three hours to take a picture of them with like their favorite character. And basically, these events, I mean, whether your kids like Star Wars or comic books, there's people in costumes that will be glad to take a picture with your child, and it's, the, the, the feeling that I got from last year's RenCon was that compared to sort of the, like, I mean, it's exciting when you go to Emerald City Comic-Con, but the 40,000 people, it's crazy, and the parking's like impossible, and people are all crowded. RenCon had a really nice feel. I think everybody had a great time there. So strongly recommend it. My family will be there. We're looking forward to it.
Thanks, Randy. Thank you, Brian. It was a very good presentation. A little disappointed in the address, but outside of that...
If you come this weekend, I will be...
Well, I've seen you, so I know what you're saying.
It'll be disappointing. There'll be a lot more beside you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for coming down. Appreciate it. Okay, administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I wanted to update you on several things. First, wanted to just give a quick report. This past weekend was Renton's Annual Day of Service on Saturday, September 9th. It's in commemoration of the 9/11 attack on the United States, and President Obama authorized a number of years later for us, in commemoration of that, to actually give a day of service to our community. So the city's been involved with that. We had hundreds of volunteers out this weekend working on a number of various parks, cleaning up the city parks, working on landscaping around our senior center, and involved in a number of other activities to help beautify the community, and so we really appreciate all those volunteers. We had members of the city council and city staff, as was the mayor on hand to provide burgers and some food for the volunteers afterwards. We met Liberty Park, had entertainment there provided by the King County Library District, and all in all, it was a great event. A number of sponsors, business sponsors, helped to phrase some of the cost of getting people together, and we just had a great time, and a lot of good work was done. So I wanted to, again, thank those who volunteered. Beginning this month, actually, I believe this week, Renton will be conducting its, what we call Biannual Community Survey. This will be a telephone survey, so if you're contacted, please, we hope you'll take the time to answer the questions that'll be asked of you, to help us better understand how you feel about the services the city's providing, any concerns you might have with the community, and generally just to help us get a feel for how we're doing and things in which we can improve in terms of providing you with the best service possible in your community. This seems to be a month of surveys and questionnaires. At the same time, our Parks and Community Services Department is asking for input on our parks and trails, our annual customer satisfaction survey. Through this month, there will be, it's available on our city's website, and it's also in hard copy form at our Senior Activities Center, our community center, the Highlands Neighborhood Center, City Hall, and we just encourage folks who actively use our parks to take a minute and provide feedback to help us in knowing how we can, again, improve service in our parks and rec. The, we're also in the process of updating our bicycle trails and master plan, and so on September 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the community center, we'll be holding an open house for folks to come on in, learn more about the, that master plan, what's being proposed, and provide input to help us, again, create a better document that we can work from. This seems to be the month also for annual maintenance from a lot of our city facilities. We had our community center closed a few weeks ago. This week, the Senior Activities Center will be closed while we do annual maintenance, and it'll reopen Monday, September 25th. Our Solid Waste Utility is kicking off its free eco-film series by exploring plastic waste this Thursday, September 21st. So next week, from 6:00 PM at Carco Theater, participants will be provided an opportunity to upcycle used T-shirts into reusable shopping bags, followed by a screening of three short films that shed light on the plastic problem. So we hope folks that are interested in that will stop by and learn a skill and get educated. The new and improved Renton Clean Sweep program will be in effect for single-family residential customers. Each household, this is a little different from prior years, you can schedule one collection to take place on your regular garbage day between September and the end of the year, December 29th, almost the end of the year, at no additional charge. So rather than having a single-event day, what people have to work through, you can simply contact Republic Services and schedule your clean sweep day for yourself, a time that will be most convenient for you and your family. We continue to conduct a number of traffic improvement programs, and so as always, we just ask folks to be patient and exercise caution when they're moving through those construction zones. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Covington. And council, I wanted to bring up just an update for you on the Hookah Lounge shooting incident we had last weekend. We've got an active investigation as well as an interdepartmental effort going forward to try to better understand what's going on there and to take whatever types of steps that we can to avert that. That was a totally unacceptable situation where a lot of shots were fired, and miraculously only two people were hit. The most seriously injured individual is alive today thanks to the efforts of the Renton Police Department. Two of our officers applied a tourniquet. He had arterial bleeding going on, and it was a very volatile situation. The bottom line to it is, we need to better understand why this is happening at the Hookah Lounges. We had similar incidents, not quite to that degree, down near the lounge near IKEA, and we have subsequently taken action on that location. This weekend, in fact, I can't remember if it was, it was this weekend, there was another shooting at the Hookah Lounge in Kent, and I don't know any of the details in terms of any injuries there. And there was also, following the shooting incident here in Renton, two Hookah Lounges in Seattle had gunfire taking place. So we're working with the city attorney's office and our business license crew and our code enforcement, and clearly with the police to figure out what our next steps will be. We're in, we're going to be notifying the property owners of the concerns that we have in regards to that site and that facility, and I do want to say that the management have been very cooperative with the police, and, you know, we have some video that is just almost unbelievable from, from that incident, and so we're going to try to identify individuals that were involved inside and outside of that restaurant. So it's an ongoing investigation, and we're taking this incident very, very seriously, and we'll update you again once we have more information. Okay, moving on to audience comments. We have a couple people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come out to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. for the record, and you have five minutes.
Cynthia Colley, Renton, Washington. Mr. Mayor, city council members. Well, law of attraction, this is what I came to talk to you about. I hope you will consider revoking the business license of a business in town. On Friday afternoon, I had the occasion to go by Granola's Health Food Store, formerly Minkler's Green Earth. I have frequented that business for decades. As a refresher, where this business is located is on the south side of Airport Way, where moms and dads, men and women, boys and girls, sons and daughters travel going to and from home and work. It's also right across the street from a major manufacturer of airplanes to the tune of give or take $80 million, and gives my hometown its claim to fame, the Jet City capital of the world. The same business is located west by northwest of a house of faith that has a youth center attached to it. It is two blocks north of Renton High School and shares an alleyway with the Salvation Army Food Bank, which takes care of populations of men, women, children, and families for their services provided there. While I was making my purchase in this business, I happened to look out the window and said, "What did they do over there?" Because I knew the shared business parking lot adjacent to the health food store had a cafe there at one point in time, and they're not serving food, but the business is still open. I didn't know what was occurring. And the clerk told me it was a Hookah Lounge. Okay, no, no judgment on that aspect. Then the next comment out of the clerk's voice was, "And then the bullets went through the window." I said, "Say what?" I was out of the loop. And this incident that you may very well know of occurred a week ago this evening is, I said, "Say what?" "Oh, yeah, and this couple guys were shot, and guns, and police game." I said, "Say what?" It saddened me. It saddened me to think this was happening in my backyard. As I was leaving the business, I talked to another clerk, and there were still gun casings in the back alleyway, right by the gate to the Salvation Army. I've not read the incident report, Mr. Mayor, although I have made a request for it, and that case number for the city of Renton Police Department is 17-11046. Granted, I've not read the report yet, I've made the request for it, I should have it within five business days. When I heard of this incident occurring in my hometown, in my backyard, is, I was, I recalled raising my hand for the oath of enlistment in the United States Air Force, where I raised my hand and swore to defend the Constitution, but not to defend behavior such as this, to possibly hurt innocent people and innocent persons unwittingly because of someone's behavior. This should not be deemed the first time of this incident. I believe you should consider it to be the last time this occurrence will happen at this particular business, Cossey's Hookah Lounge. From my perspective, I think the business license should be revoked and the business closed immediately tonight, even before the city council meeting concludes. Mr. Mayor, city council members, my fellow citizens, my fellow veterans, my fellow registered voters and honored guests, I appreciate you hearing my viewpoint this evening, and I thank you. I now entertain the conversation around the question, what is the reasoning for allowing this business to still be in operation? I thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jean Demond.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, thank you. Before I get into the gist of my remarks, I would like to say thank you very much to the fine folks at the Parks Department who did a super job cleaning up the dog park after our recent parvo outbreak. My dog and I thank them from the bottom of our hearts and love using the dog park. And I'd also like to thank the folks from the Department of Public Works, who are working very hard to keep the sewer line that runs outside my house clear and look for improvements. Everyone has been very courteous, very hardworking, and we appreciate what they're doing so that we can continue to keep flushing.
Thanks. I'll pass along your, your comments to the Park Department, and the Public Works Administrator is right behind you, so he made note of that.
Thank you. My name is Jean Demond, and I reside in Renton, Washington. I'm here tonight as a member of SENS, the Coalition of Eastside Neighborhoods for Sensible Energy, and my topic is PSE's just announced plans to split the Energize Eastside permit application into two separate applications for a newly invented northern and southern segment of what was previously a single project. I believe this is inconsistent with applicable statutes, rules, and regulations, as well as long-established city policies. I will summarize our main concerns, and I have a copy of our attorney's detailed letter on the subject for each of you. The Energize Eastside Transmission Project, since its inception, has always been presented by PSE as a single project, never any indication about dividing the project into northern and southern components for permitting. Washington law has been clear for many years that division of a single project into separate elements for approval purposes is not appropriate, starting with Merkel versus the Port of Brownsville in 1973. Splitting the review process is wasteful and duplicative for the government agencies of the three cities, which early on established and publicized a cooperative lead agency process that has been underway since 2013. It is also unduly burdensome on the concerned citizens, who have spent countless hours participating in public meetings, the CAG process, and analyzing and commenting on two enormously-long draft EIS documents. By virtue of its undue burden, doubling the review process is inconsistent with the city's policies of encouraging citizen and facilitating citizen engagement in the land review, land use review process. Splitting this project into two segments for permitting purposes is contrary to established land use and planning law as well. These so-called segments are going to operate as a single unit if they are built. The impacts of the whole project must be considered in a single proceeding, lest the impacts of the whole are lost in this artificial division. The reason given by PSE for the split is a previously undiscussed and undisclosed need to prevent rolling blackouts in the southern portion of the project. This is not believable on its face. There is no documentation that communities at the south area of the project, Tuitt, Renton, Newcastle, perhaps South Bellevue, are in need of additional transmission capacity. In fact, it has been clearly stated since the beginning that the proposed transmission lines will be necessary to serve the Bellevue Central Business District and surrounding areas since the very first draft environmental impact statement. If this is really new information, it's the kind of information that requires a supplemental draft EIS under the Washington Administrative Code 197114054B. If the reason for the split is rather to prevent the East Bellevue Community Council, who has previously sparred with PSE over a transmission line on 148th, from engaging in decision-making for the entire project, it would be a dangerous precedent for cities to allow. The three cities should stand together and not permit deliberate evasion of permitting procedures requiring local community review of conditional use permits. In summary, splitting this project into two applications is inconsistent with prior extensive SEPA reviews, the State Environmental Protection Agency review, with local ordinances, and with state case law. The city should not accept piecemeal applications for a project that is clearly and always has been a single unit, and should closely question why a new rolling blackout issue is being raised at this late date. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Carmen.
I actually hadn't, I appreciate Ms. Demond coming and presenting that. I hadn't heard about that, that that's being split up, and I, it, it actually has me concerned about something else, too, which is that I don't want the Renton corridor to get different treatment than the Bellevue corridor, and I particularly don't want Renton ratepayers to, in fact, say foot a, you know, better treatment in the corridor in Bellevue than we're getting in Renton. So I guess I'd like, I certainly like this concern investigated, and I think Ms. Demond makes a good point. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will do. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have eight items for council consideration. Are there any items that councilor like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item G.
G? Okay. Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I would like to ask the council to concur with the consent agenda, minus item G.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the consent agenda, minus item G. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person?
Yes. Item G is to hire a lateral police officer at step D of the salary grade effective September 16, 2017, considering the fact that today is September 11th. I don't think we can get this through the Finance Committee, and this is something we fairly routinely do, especially when, with the police officers, because if we can get them before somebody else does, it's very important. So with that, I move, council approve the hiring of a lateral police officer at step D.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Carmen, that council approve item G of the consent agenda in regards to the hiring of a lateral police officer at step D. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Pavoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Carmen.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has been at work again.
Okay, Finance Committee, committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on September 11th, 2017, claims vouchers 5534 through 5536, 5556 through 5564, 82517, 359399 through 359408, 359411 through 359412, 34, or excuse me, 359421 through 359434, 359454 through 359752, and one wire transfer, one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $4,806,836.99, and payroll vouchers including 744 direct deposits and 74 payroll vouchers totaling $1,402,630.30. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I, excuse me, I move the council concur and recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd be remiss if I didn't bring you a couple things of information. Everybody that loves trees in downtown Renton and all this planting where there's no water system, well, last month, we spent $19,786.10 to have the water buffalo truck come around and water for us. The police department is sharpening their skills all the time, and they just bought $61,524.17 worth of ammunition, so be careful.
That's right.
And I think most important to a lot of people that live around any of our water sources, like in the valley, we spent $18,414.90 for mosquito abatement.
There you go.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Witchy.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to legislation, we have two ordinances.
Both ordinances are regarding the Tim D annexation, and they're for second and final reading. The first is, well, I'll just read it. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, annexing certain territory to the city of Renton, the Tim D annexation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Carmen, that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Carmen?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance is Tim D annexation zoning. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, establishing the zoning classification of certain property annexed within the city of Renton from R4 urban residential four-dwelling units per acre King County zoning to R4 residential four-dwelling units per acre city of Renton zoning. This, too, is a Tim D annexation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Carmen, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Carmen?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the committee of the whole will be meeting on September 18th at 5:30. We have three items on the agenda. The first two are security camera update and the regional issues update. Those will be held in the conferencing center. Then we will take a short break and move into council chambers, where we will have a Wash dot I405 master plan improvement update. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carmen?
And no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Thursday, September 14th at 4:00 p.m., the Planning and Development Committee will meet in the council conference room. We have two items on the agenda, city center community plan text amendment and comprehensive plan amendments. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Witchy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, September 18th, has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just need to announce the Utilities Committee will be meeting on Thursday, September 14th at 3:30 p.m. in the council conference room. One single item on the agenda, and that is a solid waste update. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Aviation Committee is scheduled on September 18th, has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish to the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Witchy, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.